I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to know will call Shelley.
There are quite a few bills being presented. There is one that will require that school boards solicit bids and award a public works contract to the lowest bidder if the estimated cost of the contract exceeds $150,000 in its remodeling or improvement furniture supplies or materials. Now, we all kind of know that sometimes the lowest bid is not always is not always the best bid for you. So I'm going to see how this they tried it before, they brought it before, they have never passed. WASBA is opposed to this, so we'll see how that one turns out. Assembly Bill 370 requires the Board of Regents of the University of Wisconsin System and tech colleges to establish a guarantee admission for applicants who are in rank in the top 5% of their class. So we'll see how that one that one turns out.
Can I talk about how they fund it?
Oh, no, oh, no, 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 no. They just have to guarantee admission. I'm sure the students are going to be on the we'll have to fund it, but there would be guaranteed admission. There's another one related to the DPI and mental health programs. Under the current law, the DPI must establish a mental health training program, and it has to provide training to school districts and independent charter schools. But under this bill, the DPI must annually distribute information about the mental health training program to school boards, independent charter schools. Initially, under the bill, each school and charter school governing board must develop a plan for addressing mental health issues that arise for school staffing, members and pupils. And finally, the bill requires each school board and charter school to give that information to their staff every year. It sounds like a lot of paperwork again, and a lot of it's time consuming. So well, that that one just went to the Assembly. It's passed by the Assembly. Passed by the Senate. There's going to be a program for a school psychologist loan program, and they're going to offer them through the Higher Education AIDS Board, they're going to offer them a student loan of up to $10,000 annually for up to three years, and then they must forgive 25% of that loan if they're in working as a school psychologist in a school. Loan doesn't say anything about interest or is this interest free? Doesn't say doesn't mention anything about that. And then there's one for a recovery high school grant program. Operational grants for recovery high schools. I didn't know what this was, but apparently it's a school that has only operating through high school grades and is specifically designed for pupils recover from substance abuse or mental health issues. Let's see here. The parental bill of rights.
Oh, it's bad.
Yes, I did see that. That one was is going to the Assembly tomorrow. It would give parents.
All the rights they already have.
All the basically all, I mean, there's like 16 of these rights. The right to see the curriculum, anybody can come in and see the curriculum. I guess they just want to make it in, they want to try and make it into law. It also requires school boards to set up a process. Here, we time consuming again. A process to receive and review submitted complaints because if you feel that you're not you're you're being denied your rights, you can you can sue the school district.
Yeah, that's the biggest threat, I think, of this bill because everything else that they're making it sound like they don't have now, like the parent's right to review any medical records, the parent's right to review any grades, the parent's right to review curriculum. All of that, like you said, is already guaranteed in all of our state statutes.
Well, most of them, like now, the right, where was that one? The right to determine the names and pronouns used in the child while at school. So there are some additional things what we would think would be, you know, see the curriculum, things like that.
I think, again, that should be local control because what I'm concerned about is the suing aspect because they, you know, if a family wants to sue over that, if they if their perception is that we are not handling it the way they want to, you know, there could be all sorts of suits.
It gives parents the rights to review instructional materials and curriculum, which which they can now, and be notified of controversial topics. And then your child has the option to you can pull your child out of that if you don't feel like and they can do that now. There's just a couple, like I said, there's 16 of them. Some of them are what they have now, and some are a couple of little additionals. Let's see. There is another one going tomorrow is a bill, SB 597, requires school boards to develop and implement a policy for notifying parents or guardians of children under 16 of each material checked out by their child at the school library. Requires school boards to issue an annual notification to parents that will allow students of the district to access materials through this Badger link. It's an electronic collection library resource. I'm assuming this is coming from, I don't know if anybody's ever seen any of those videos where parents stand up at school board meetings and they read from these sexually explicit books. And, you know, the school board is just, you can't say that here, but but the book is found in the school libraries. So I'm sure that this is what is going on. This is what's prompting this.
That student will just have friends check it out for them so it doesn't show on the record.
Well, 16 and under.
Well, the other thing is it's recording, it's putting the burden on us as a school district instead of the parents paying attention to what their kids are reading.
Yes, but I know myself.
Parents need to, you know, have some responsibility, not always put it back on the school district.
Kids are very creative as to hide things from their parents.
Well, there's nothing that, I mean, it's been proven that the more something has been prohibited, the more interested people become in looking at it.
Correct, but I think what they're.
So I think it can back.
I think what they're getting at is those books shouldn't even be in the school system.
Maybe there are some, but I would trust that our librarians would make sure that there is appropriate material, looking at a ex librarian, you know, appropriate materials for school age kids.
Dave, a couple of years ago, do we have any inappropriate books in the library?
Again, it depends on.
You haven't read all of them? I have not read them all. You know, that's I'll I'll just simply say that we hire a professional to staff the library.
Inappropriate materials, hopefully, are something that is under watch.
But what you might think is inappropriate, some other parents would say, I don't believe that.
Some of this borders online of some of these books border on the line of pornographic?
Well, okay.
So anyway, that's where we're going with that. We'll see where it ends. I'm done.
Okay. Moving on, Board's CISA report. Chrissy.
All right, last month, this month, earlier this month, we had a pretty short meeting. Dr. Tim was traveling, so the Director of Ops ran the meeting for us. But they did introduce a new video market specialist personnel that they brought on board. We're obviously intimately involved with CISA. I go there every month, but there's not that involvement with all districts. So hopefully, this video market specialist will be a bigger addition to their communications and marketing team to be able to show what they offer to all of the districts in our region. December will be a big meeting. We are talking about the budget in that meeting. They are switching their financials over to Skyward, and they also have a staffing change at their Director of Business Services. So new program, new people looking at the budget. So going over all of those reports right now, and we will talk about it in December. I am one of the volunteers reading scholarship applications for the 2024 Herb Cole Educational Foundation Scholarship. So we have that regional scoring due by December 5th. And then tomorrow, three CISA Board of Control members, including myself, Dr. Tim, and then two of the executive directors are headed out to the AESA conference in Anaheim. I've signed up for a lot of stuff on teacher retention, rural school districts, obviously first time board member stuff. But if there's anything that you think that CISA 7 is not offering our district and you'd like me to poke more into, shoot me an email, stop me after this meeting, let me know if there's a session we'd like you to attend. And Dr. Tim is one of the speakers there talking about leadership within a CISA.
Okay, questions for Chrissy? All right, we'll keep going. Morgan, student representative.
Right. So basketball, obviously, they've been working hard and preparing, and it's now in full swing, just starting. The period initiative relocated the clothing closet, and they're helping restock it as well as continuing to do their work with the period products in the bathrooms. The National Honor Society recently participated in bell ringing at Denny's for the St. Paul's Salvation Army. Holiday helpers are working hard to help with gifts this season with the Giving Tree that is at Denny's. Candy grants have started at school so people can buy them for a dollar and give them to someone special around school. Math team is recruiting and starting meets in January. There's been a book club started, and there's been good feedback from that. The college representatives that have been coming have been really good. And at the middle high school, we have a December to remember Dress Up Spirit Days coming up in December.
All right, easy as always. Any questions for Morgan? I don't have any misconceptions and rumors. Anybody sign in, Kelly?
No.
All right, moving on to Board President announcements. The first thing I will say is, and I got a copy of a letter that was sent to Pat reminding her that she is going to be honored at the at the School Board Convention in January for 20 years of service. So I'd like to once again congratulate you for your service on that. Thank you for the clapping for you at the convention. The other thing is, we had talked about changing the regular board meeting in December because of conflicts with a Christmas concert. So we regular board meeting, we had talked about moving it up to 5:00 PM, and I want to just clarify if that is still what the board wants to do. So 5:00 PM on December 18th will be our December board meeting. And then we also have a special board meeting at 6:00 PM on December 11th because we have some referendum survey results to review as a board after the last community group meets and comes up with their recommendations. And of course, the committee that is involved in that gives us the recommendations then. Okay, that's all for meeting dates and times then. We'll move on to administration reports.
All right. Hello, everyone. I hope you had a wonderful holiday. We are going to start out with our monthly budget update, and that will be presented by Amber.
I'm going to try to talk my own loud because I tend to have a southern voice, and I'm back in the corner here. So before you all tonight is the monthly board budget summary. That's this nice little four page sheet. On the left hand side, you'll see the different fund numbers. And R next to that number means revenue, E means an expenditure item. On the report, you will see negative numbers in the revenue columns or growth. Those are the money we've received there. So it's not that we're in the negative, we've received that much. Okay? So this year, we split the funds out into a couple of different categories for you. The operating funds, these are the funds that have a lot of day to day business coming in and out of them. So Fund 10 is your general fund, Fund 27 is the special ed fund, Fund 50 is for food service, and then Fund 80 is community services. The major things in community services are Packer Puffs childcare, Rising Star childcare, and Wellness Center. Those are the three major things, with some other smaller stuff in there. So so far this year, we're in about five months into the fiscal year. You would want to see about 42% or less for expenditures. Your revenues are a little bit different because you have some major players that come in chunks throughout the year rather than on a regular basis, one of those being the tax revenues. We won't get our first tax payment until January. The second one comes in February. The taxes account for about 24% of the revenue in Fund 10. And they account for about 67% of the revenue for Fund 80. The other big chunk of money we get in for revenue is state aids. That's about 54% of their annual revenues for Fund 10, so really big portion. We get 15% in September, we'll get another 25 in December, 25 in March, and then whatever is remaining will come at the end of June. So revenues, I'm not too concerned about. The expenditures are looking great. We are well underneath that 42% mark. There are a few bigger bills that only get paid out once a year, but for the majority of the line items, we're doing really good. The next section of funds are, I just call them other funds. These are your debt funds. Fund 38 is the non-referendum debt. Fund 39 is referendum debt, meaning the voters approve it. And Fund 46 is your long term capital improvement fund. So Fund 38 revenues, that is just money transferred from the general fund over to make those payments. So we don't transfer the money until we actually make the payment. Payments are made twice a year. Interest is paid twice, principal is paid once. So we've only made one interest payment so far this year. Fund 39 gets its revenues from the taxes, so we won't see any revenue in there until January, February. And then Fund 46 is transfers over with a little bit of interest earnings. So just a kind of brief overview for the general public who may not know, the school board has put in place a policy to have Fund 46, and we set money aside for future replacement needs. The money we can set aside varies widely from year to year based on the revenue limits set by the state. So last year, no money was transferred over. This year, we got about $70,000 that's being transferred. Though that money is going to be able to replace vehicles or the smaller things. You will never be able to set enough money aside for major building repairs, new roofs, upgrades to the heating and cooling system. That's what the referendum debt covers. Okay? So I kind of skipped right through this slide. So again, due to the revenue limits set by the state, that amount that we transfer every year will vary up and down. The goal will be to try and save up enough money so when the next school bus needs to be replaced, we have enough saved up to do that. We will be working on updating the capital improvement plan. The current plan will expire at the end of this fiscal year, 2023-24 school year. And we hope to have the updated plan before the school board by the end of this year. Are there any questions?
Nicely done.
All right, I will take it over from here. Just a few reminders, dates for school board candidacy. This is December 22nd by 5:00 PM. That's a hard deadline for any incumbents that wish to file notice of non-candidacy. And then anyone that would like to run for election, the window opens December 1st, runs through January 2nd. Again, a hard deadline of 5:00 PM on that January 2nd to file your campaign registration statements and your declaration of candidacy.
And for anybody that is interested, paperwork can be obtained in the business office.
That's correct, yes. I put the packets together today, so they are ready to go. There's an informational sheet that goes with it. It's going into all of the dates and what forms need to be filled out. I created some examples of the forms and how to fill them all out, so. And I'll be working very closely with Chris Sly as our clerk on those. He gets the privilege of signing all the fund papers, so. A reminder that the WASD convention is coming up in January, the state convention, January 17th through the 19th in Milwaukee. I believe we have a few board members planning to attend this year. Elgoma will be presenting at the conference this year, so that's exciting.
Yes, I saw it in the magazine here, here.
I'll be at the delegate December during that.
Yes. Well, and I'm conflicted because I would love to see how you guys do, but I sort of like, well, I know what you're doing, so I should probably go to a different session anyway.
It will be recorded too, so.
Okay, perfect. Well, go get to see it.
Two other things I want to just share out. One, we had a meeting a few weeks ago. Dave Robertson, myself, and Courtney Schmidt, our school counselor at the middle school, high school, with NWTC to look at how our pathways for college have been going. And I was just amazed at how well for a small district we are doing in the area of dual credits. And so I wanted to take some time and just focus on that, educate the board and the public on all the work that's been going into this and the benefits that we're seeing with our students because of this. So again, we partnered with Northwest Wisconsin Technical College, NWTC, to offer dual credit courses. What that means is students can receive high school and college credits at the same time by taking specific courses that we offer in our coursebook. There's a couple of different types of dual credit courses. The first one is advanced standing, which are courses that are taught by our high school teachers. The courses are then determined to be a close match to offering that NWTC would then offer. The second would be a transcribed credit course. And so NWTC courses are taught by our high school students. They're trained by faculty at NWTC. So and then the last one is Start College Now. These courses are taught solely by NWTC instructors. So three different pathways for our students to take part in. This is going back to 2223, so we're looking at last year's data because we're in the middle of this school year. But last year, the Elgoma School District offered 16 advanced standing courses that were taught by our high school teachers. When you think about how many teachers we have that teach high school to offer 16 courses, that's pretty amazing, I think.
And a credit to our teachers.
Exactly, yes. And I'll get into specifically what courses we're looking at on the next few slides here. But the educator must use a curriculum that is approved by NWTC. It aligns with that college level curriculum, so there's a high level rigor that's involved with it. And then the student must earn a B or higher to receive the credit, meaning that they can skip that introductory course when they move on to their post-secondary program. Of the transcribed credit courses of our students, last year in total, there was 836 credits awarded to our students. If you total that all up at $160 roughly per credit, we awarded our students about $140,000 in tuition. So that's tuition that parents don't have to pay, students don't have to pay. I mean, it's just a phenomenal amount, I think, when you look at our district, our size. Here are the courses that our staff are currently teaching. You can see the staff names along the top. So Erin Bellone, Marie Bowman, Eric Nelson, Chris Robinson, Wade Vander Best, Alex Van Lannan, and Angela Weber. So you can see the different types of courses that are offered to our students. We just got approved today, actually, general physics for next year, so we'll be adding one more to that course. 53 students took transcribed courses, again, totally about 900 credits. Of that, 15 students took one to eight credits last year. 14 students took nine to 14 credits. And 24, so the bulk of our students, took 15 credits or more of transcribed courses.
Is this mostly your seniors, or is it?
Great question. So it depends on the course and what the requirements are. But really, it could offer from freshman all the way to senior if the courses allow. But you'll probably see a bulk of them junior and senior year. And then getting into the Start College Now, so that third pathway, we had 12 students from Elgoma that took 66 credits. And they ranged from anywhere from auto mechanic diesel to welding, healthcare field, American Sign Language is very popular with our students right now, and then just some general study courses that students like to get out of the way so they don't have to take them when they become freshmen at post-secondary schools. So in total, 102 credits were awarded for the Start College Now pathway, and the total value of that was over $17,000 to our students. So a lot of some amazing work. Any questions about the partnership that we have with NWTC?
It's always been a strong partnership, and wow, it really does benefit our students when our teachers are willing to do that extra work.
It's amazing, yes, yes. It'll be interesting to see what happens after 2025 when the HHLC has been kind of been pushed along several times now. It's set to expire in '25. Our hope is that higher learning institutes so allowing high school teachers to teach the dual credits. There's certain certifications, qualifications you need. If that goes away, the rigor, the qualification goes up. You have to have a master's degree in that certain field, so. We're working closely with the legislators on trying to get that pushed through again so we can still offer these courses though. And then the last thing I want to speak about is state report cards. So those were made public on November 14th. Happy to share that Elgoma scores went up across the board. We saw some pretty nice gains. Again, there's four different areas that the report card looks at that kind of give you that composite score. The first one is achievement, second one is growth, then outcomes, and on track graduation. The achievement and growth are the two weighted areas, so they vary depending on your socioeconomic status of your district and the population that we serve. Our population is more heavily leaning towards low socioeconomic status, so we are more heavily weighted in the growth area, which helps increase our scores this year. So the scores range from a zero to 100. It's not a percentage, like how we think of like As being from 90 to 100, Bs, you know, how we were graded as kids. And then there's four areas within that score of 0 to 100. Fails to meet expectations, meets minimal expectations, meets expectations, exceeds expectations, I think, are the four. So we fell in the meets expectations, what I'll get into a little bit later. But just a reminder that DPI uses a three year average for determining these scores. This is the first year that we did not have any pre-COVID scores as part of our overall score that we received.
Meaning that all of the COVID years are in this score.
They are included, correct, yep. So the overall district score, we get a report card for the district itself. We fell in the meets expectations, which had a score of 62.5. That was an increase of 4.2 points from last year's report card. Again, we are heavily weighted in growth and less in achievement, so. For the elementary school, fell in the meets expectations category. They had a score of 61.6, and that was an increase of 3.3 points from last year. For the middle school and high school, their score fell in within the meets expectations and had a 62.1. That was an increase of 3.7 points from last year. And then finally, we had the Elgoma Venture Academy, or AVA. They fell in the meets expectations with a score of 60.8. We were a little worried because the score was lower than that, but they miscalculated the attendance rates for us going back to two years ago when AVA first opened. So we submitted a correction to DPI, and that score got bumped up to 60.8. This is the first year that they've received a state report card because, again, it's a three year average. They're in their third year, so now they have three years of data to look at.
They didn't have two years of data, so I'm still uncertain about the average. Because none of our scores or anything from the beginning are in yet. So it doesn't quite make sense to me.
That's true. Good point.
We were anxious.
I'll check on that. I'll check on that.
Yeah, and we also had to fill out an alternate accountability form this year, um, which is an alternate accountability to the state report card, so we had to fill that out. Yet they still gave us.
Report card? So it's like one or the other. So I can make up your mind.
Overall, um, very pleased with the state report cards and the progress that we're making. Um, this is a testament to the hard work that our teachers are doing each and every day, whether it's um working small groups with students, whole group instruction, one-on-one, um, getting to know, learning the curriculum resources that are out there, all the meetings, PLC meetings that um staff are attending. So um, this this work doesn't happen overnight. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. Um, and again, it's led by our amazing administrative team too, so a lot of credit goes to them too.
And it's based primarily on assessment testing, right?
Yes, so there's um ACT scores go into it, graduation rates go into it. Um, a big chunk is the forward exam, which is taken in spring, um, grades four through ten. Um, some grade levels have to take all four subtests, so science, social studies, math, and ELA. So they are looking at some changes for next year for the forward exam, um, taking away, I believe, the writing portion for for this coming year. So it'll be interesting to see how that impacts some of our scores, because writing seems to be always a barrier for our students. So.
Okay.
All right. Um, I am complete.
All right. Any questions for Jessie? All right, we'll keep going. Elementary principals report.
Okay, all right. I am going to start with the library plan. Katie Strutz had all intentions of being here this evening, but she was not feeling good towards the end of the day, so she's at home resting herself. Um, and I told her I would present the plan instead. Um, you did receive a copy of this in your board packets. Um, just a few things that I wanted to point out because it does need to be approved by the school board later on this evening. Um, so I wanted to make sure to share a few things and then give you time to ask some questions if you have any. Um, but if you take a look at the formatting of the library plan, it's kind of broken into two sections. So the first half just kind of talks about the some of the beliefs of the libraries of the Elgoma School District. Um, and what she did was she tried to align those to the goal, the board goals, the five board goals that we have. So you probably can look up some similar language in there. And then the second half of the library plan was her working together with Jessie, Dave, myself, and kind of trying to formulate some long-term goals, five-year goals, um, that she, starting this year, would like to work with everybody on for the next five years. So it's kind of twofold. Again, the first half is like the beliefs of our current library program, and the second half is our goals for the next five years. So I was hoping that we could turn to the goals section. Um, it's on the page that says library goals, and then it lists out there are four of them. Um, she, these are things that, um, over the last couple of years that she has been with us here in the Elgoma School District that she really um is now ready to take some action on. Um, those of you who know Katie, and those of you who have known our libraries prior to Katie, um, know the night and day difference that exists already, just in the structure, the aesthetics, the welcoming environment, the organization, the collection of resources. Um, so she has spent her first couple of years in the district basically building, rebuilding both libraries and both buildings. Um, so the library goals that are listed here are more, or just more or less, her taking a look at where we are at right now today and where we want to be in the next five years. So I just kind of wanted to go through those four goals quickly, just to give you an idea of what she's thinking, what we as administrators are supporting her in. Um, the first goal is all about collaboration, so it's collaborative leadership. In this goal, she has really wanted to work more with teachers um across the district. Um, she wants to offer herself as a resource, offer the library as a resource, um, whether it be working on a research project, whether it be aligning what classroom teachers are doing in their classroom with what she's teaching in the library. Um, she just really wants to strengthen that piece with teachers. Number two, she wants to design a tool for staff to recommend books and other resources. Um, obviously, we have our cataloging system. Teachers can look up resources if they want. She can also provide them with those lists, but she wants to create something a little bit more efficient, um, based on what they're doing in the classroom. And then number three, she wants to share out data with both buildings as far as how the library is used, what resources are used, and she also wants to share stories of how she collaborated with teachers, because then I think that opens up, um, it'll just opens up the doors for more teachers to want to collaborate on their projects. Um, so in the box, in the boxes on each of these pages, she has listed out a few ideas that she has. Um, in addition to those goals, she has also talked about forming an advisory board with students, so that students also have a say in the resources and the kinds of learning that takes place in the library. And then also specific to the elementary school, but she would like to um explore options for bigger space within the library. So that's going to be STEM-based, hands-on, creation-based um type of learning for students. So that is collaborative leadership. Any questions on that goal? Goal two um is community partnerships. I think it aligns very well to many of the other things that we do um well within the district. So this is all about utilizing different partnerships within the community to strengthen um love of literacy within the community. So number one, she talks about um utilizing part of the budget to gather print material from uh the Artstick, so a local bookseller. Um, so it's kind of a mutual relationship there, so she can put more books in the hands of students and community members. Second one there is she and I have had a lot of conversations about promoting summer reading, so she wants to work with public library to promote summer reading in different ways with our students, young and old. Um, now that we have Packer Pops and our existing Little Stars program, she really wants to kind of immerse herself into that a little bit more and offer herself as a resource and just get them in the library and get them interested in loving books very early on. And then number four, she has just talked about tracking the partnerships that exist and different things that she's tried. Um, some things to think about is again with um different reading challenges and competitions, and then also number two, literacy workshops for students and families. Questions on that one? Okay, goal number three, budget and resources. Um, this is something that she has talked about a lot. Um, basically, the goal here is to maximize the different library funds that are available for her to use. So um, she's done a phenomenal job of reading out our resources that were a little bit dated, updating them. She wants to continue doing that, but she also wants to use the funds that are available in a way that will best serve students. So she's talked a lot about digital resources. She's talked about um resources that students can take home with them. So she just really wants to do some self-learning as well, to see what options are out there, so that the funds that we do use in the library are put to good use. So number one, going along with that, is her attending professional development, um, because she feels like that is the best way to keep herself up to date, so she can keep our libraries up to date. Number two, um, diversity tools, to go through each collection, to determine which areas within which collections need some, need some more titles. I know when she first came, um, she did inventory of even just nonfiction versus fiction, and she wanted to make sure we had enough in each category. So similarly, she'd like to continue doing that. Um, number three, review subject headings within the catalog to make sure they are appropriate for the diverse audience of students. Uh, number four is maintaining a robust infrastructure of relevant databases and online resources. So again, this is all about just maximizing the funds that are available for us to use. Some things to think about and some examples that she came up with is um reviewing the usage and impact of the resources. Um, she has access to a whole bunch of different reports, so she can see what students are checking out, uh, what they're interested in, what they're not interested in, and she can adjust accordingly. Um, and then number two, she wants to include additional multilingual resources, both print and digital, to make sure that we're reaching our English and Spanish learners. Any questions on that one? And then goal number four, curriculum instruction and assessment. So, um, in addition to um managing the infrastructure of our libraries, she also teaches definitely at the elementary school level. Um, so she has really wanted to focus on how she can um create this scope and sequence so that by the time students are in middle school, they are independent um in what they're looking for in the library, the kinds of resources, that they have research skills that are a little bit stronger, um, all of those things that are really important for the students to be able to do. So again, number one focuses on professional development, so she wants to make sure she's staying up to date with things, so that students are up to date with things. Number two, um, this one's all about a workable document. So she basically wants to develop from scratch a scope and sequence that she can use um from four K all the way through sixth grade and beyond, so that all of the skills that she's teaching build on one another, so that they're ready for middle school and high school. And then she also, number three, wants to create a digital and media literacy unit. So um, something modern, up to date, and something that is very relevant and meaningful to our students, just so that they're practicing safe um digital media literacy in the process. Some things to think about, um, she talked about designing video tutorials, online courses for teachers, and then also number two, showcasing her library resources can support literacy across all subject areas. So she's very impressed with that as well. Any questions on that goal? Lots of kudos to Katie Strutz for putting this together.
Oh, absolutely. I was very impressed reading through this.
Yeah, very thorough. She definitely has thought of everything, so.
And exciting, you know, I mean, to to see a thriving libraries, you know, um, program, because there can be so much of a resource to the teachers and the students when you have somebody actively engaged that is running that. So yes, we have lots of.
Okay, um, November bright spots. Um, so November, I feel like went by in a flash. We had parent-teacher conferences this month. Um, we had really great participation from our families this year. Um, I took a really good time to sit down with them and talk with them about how their children are doing at school, kind of make some goals for the rest of the year. Um, I also would like to extend a huge thank you to Gus Graff and Graff's Mobile Mart. Um, he applied for, he applied for and was awarded a five hundred dollar STEM grant from the ExxonMobil Education Alliance. So we're hoping to use those funds to bring additional hands-on learning opportunities to the students. So we recently had Planetarium here. Um, Mrs. Schartner brought in the, the name is. Yeah, the Peninsula Ruptile House, that is called. Um, so the students got to be hands-on with that. So just more things, more opportunities like that for them, for the students to be hands-on with their learning. So that was a nice surprise. We did not, we did not know that he was doing that. So thank you to him and to Graff's Mobile Mart. Um, we also hosted um Planetarium, like we said, the Door Peninsula Astronomical Site. The Door Peninsula Astronomical Society um was the one that put that on for us, and Mrs. Hager, a third-grade teacher, coordinated that with our intermediate science teachers. Um, so that was a huge success, and that was funded by our PTS, so also a huge thank you to them. Um, and then, as Katie Horn said, we have the Peninsula Ruptile House here, um, and Mrs. Schartner was the one that coordinated that for our first-grade students. I also wanted to follow up on our Veterans Day program. Um, if you had the chance to attend, it was a beautiful program. We were able to serve a lunch for the first time since COVID. Um, we had about forty guests for lunch, so that was a pretty good turnout. Um, we held the lunch in the commons, which was really nice, because then everybody could just easily move over to the auditorium to um to watch the program. Um, we had our first grade students serenading their guests as they made their way to the auditorium. So if you had a chance to see that, that was new this year, um, but I thought it was a really, it was a really awesome touch. We had a student that was the speaker, um, so that was also something new. Um, and talking with Mrs. Massey and Ms. Bader, they said they really wanted to shift the focus to really connecting the students with the veterans, because it is such a far, I feel like our students are always so far removed, and as more time goes by, that gap just kind of gets wider. And so they really wanted to focus on kind of trying to bring that together just a little bit more. Um, so thank you to them for that vision, um, and for putting in all of the work to make that a huge success, along with all the student volunteers, the teachers that had their students participate. It was just a really good program overall. Um, and then lastly, the Achievement Gap Reduction Program, so AGR, something that we have participated in for many years, formerly known as Sage. Um, I will report out on our mid-year data in January after our students take our mid-year assessments, but I did provide for you the DPI summary of their um research reevaluation of the program. Um, similar to last year when I shared this, they did find that overall, there's really no significant statistical um effect of AGR on elementary schools. Um, there's like a thirty-page summary that goes into a lot more detail, um, but AGR really focuses on improving student achievement, attendance, and behavior, and overall, for the most part, um, it's just kind of neutral. So I thought, I always think that's interesting. Um, they do say that, so if you, so Sage, um, it was all about reduced class sizes, so it was a one to eighteen's teacher-to-student ratio. When it moved to AGR, school districts gained a lot more flexibility, so they could continue to use that small class size, but they could also use other strategies such as coaching or individual student tutoring. So the one thing that they did say that they were able to find is that if you combined any of the two, if you use more than one strategy, the outcome was significantly better than just using one strategy alone. But other than that, there was not a ton of impact on school districts that.
Moving on, middle school, high school, principal report. Dave?
Yeah, so I'd like to talk about our professional learning communities um at the school and how that's working this year. So each week, uh, our pupil services team gets together and we review each student in the school from seventh grade through twelfth grade. A lot of weeks that includes us looking individually at each student's grades, determine how they're they're progressing academically. Then, on a weekly basis, we meet as a professional learning community, meaning the staff gathered together. And then staff who share a common interest in particular students, take that, take that group of students, look at those students individually, and determine action steps that can help uh work uh to help that student progress academically. So I just wanted to highlight um a couple of students, and I won't use their names. We had a couple of students who um were struggling in several classes. We identified that through our pupil services meeting. Those names were brought forward at the weekly professional learning community meeting, and it was so wonderful to see a group of special education teachers take two names in particular and work out a schedule that would provide additional intervention time for those students. So their schedule was individually um changed to allow for more specialized instruction and more specialized interventions with those students. Within two weeks, I had an email from one of the students that was involved telling me that they had raised their grade from a failing grade to a C. There were also growth in all of the students' other grades, um, and are, and close to passing now in in almost every class that the student is in. And we saw the same thing, or the same, or similar growth in another student. And I just bring that out because, to me, that's something we get right as a school district, is these individual connections with students. We're small enough where we can do it right, where we can sit down and look at every single student in our school and look at their grades, see. and look at their grades, see how they're doing, and have those conversations about how do we affect that student's progress academically and socially for that matter in a positive way. So this was just an example of how this is working. I also want to highlight the connection then that the teachers have with those students on that individual basis. And I just think that's something that was established years ago that we continue to get right as a district is making those connections in a very individual way with our students and then tailoring their education to help them to be progressive or to help them progress. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the freshman leadership presentations. This is an example of collaboration that's being done in the school. We have a combination of an English and a social studies class getting together and doing research on individuals throughout history that have made a positive impact on society. And there was a wide range of leaders that were presented on. Some of them would be civil rights leaders. Some of them were college athlete coaches. Some of them were science and aerospace leaders. I mean, just a wide range of leaders that were highlighted. So these freshmen then take leaders that they identify with, that they can relate with, they research them, and then they put together an oral presentation accompanied with a slideshow. And they're graded based on a rubric on research, but also then their, their public speaking. And I was able to participate in that. I know Mr. Brinkman did, I'm not sure who else did. But several of us then are able to watch those presentations and then give feedback on presentation and also on the content within those presentations. And they're, they're fun to watch. So if you ever get an invite to come and, and participate in that, please come in and see the work that those freshmen do. And then finally, eighth-grade field trip. Another great opportunity for our students to go and explore what are the opportunities that we have available in this area. Specifically, they go to the KI Center in Green Bay. There are literally hundreds of manufacturers. There's car dealerships, there's nursing programs, and hospital healthcare systems. There's just a wide variety of businesses and employers that are there. They're not allowed to ask what they want to be when they grow up. That's not allowed, you can't say that. But they ask the question, what is it that sparks your interest? What here, I like to speak smorgasbord of learning and hands-on opportunities, where they get to rotate through all these stations and try to figure out what kind of sparks their interest and help them again start to formulate what do they, what do they want to learn about while they're in school? And how do they best prepare for what comes next? Whether that's a career, whether that's college, whether that's a tech school, whether that's the armed forces, whatever that is. So that was another great opportunity that our students had that was put on down at the KI Convention Center in Green Bay. So that's, that's all I have.
What age group, what?
That's specifically for eighth graders. Earlier in the year, if you'll remember, we took these sophomores up to Door County and did some business exploration up there.
Questions? All right. Let's dig open Pathfinder Venture Academy Report and POPS.
And so start with AVA. So we had a group of students who, if you have heard of Bomba Socks, they're a popular sock company. I believe they started on Shark Tank. But for every pair of socks that somebody in the world purchases, they donate a pair of socks to somebody. So we were able to get 700 pairs of socks to donate to local organizations. They did this the last two years, at least, since AVA's been open every fall. So students, we had a group of three students who went to the nursing home and VIP and a couple of places in Door County to drop off the socks, which is, kids kind of fight over who gets to go every year because it's a really cool experience for all of them. So they did that in November. We have a large group of students go to, it was one of the churches in Luxembourg to do a dementia simulator. So they have special goggles and special gloves that the kids get to wear to experience what it's like to live with dementia. And it was a real eye-opening experience, I think, for some of the kids. Some of them, you know, already had relatives that have dementia, but it made them definitely appreciate caregivers a lot for those who are caring for people with dementia. So it was really cool. I didn't get to go, but I got to talk to some of them who came back and they were like, oh my gosh, this is actually really crazy. So definitely eye-opening, cool experience for them. And then the quarterly defense presentations. So something new we started this year. So students, obviously, in AVA's project basically do different projects throughout each quarter. They had to present to like a Shark Tank panel of us their project and defend it with the learning targets that they achieved. And they go through their portfolios. They go through all of the learning they've done, but they do focus on one main project. And we get to kind of drill them with different questions. And if, you know, they've been successful or if they've, you know, fallen behind, kind of what things we can do to help them catch up and stay the course for the rest of the semester. So that was new this year. Kids worked really hard on their quarterly defense projects, knowing who they're presenting to, but it went really well. And it's something we're definitely going to continue with AVA because it's, I mean, it's a, you know, scaled-down version of kind of if you get your master's degree and have to do a defense project there. It's real-life learning for these kids. So that was really cool to see and to have a panel for. Pathfinder went out to Wilson's Wish, and it was a very cool experience for them. If you know what Wilson's Wish is, it's a farm in Luxembourg. They, it's a second chance at a first impression farm. So they take in a lot of unwanted animals or animals that have been kind of thrown to the wayside or maybe have free legs or some, one of their goats has like propped by a wheelchair. So our students got to go out there and connect with some of the animals and the owners, and they have formed a partnership where I think once a month, they're going to go and kind of help with some of the farm chores, help with winterizing the farm. And the students were very touched by that and have decided to do a fundraiser for the organization. So I think they're going to do a walking taco organized, or organization, organized fundraiser for Wilson's Wish within the Wellness Center. So stay tuned for details on that. They have a very thought-out process that they've been doing. So they're very excited about that. We have three students who have been in work-study programs, and that's kind of like the step out of Pathfinder. So each student who graduates from Pathfinder has to have a job before they go. So we have three students who are currently working on that. And they also did, started their Food Wise partnership with EWE Extension. They've done it every year for the past four years or more where somebody from EWE Extension comes in and they do learn how to cook healthy items and healthy eating habits with things that they probably already have in their kitchen cabinets. It's always a good experience.
Sounds good. Questions for Katie? All right. Special ed bonds report.
Just a couple of things this month. Whitney Ebert is planning an indoor winter market again this year that'll take place on Saturday, December 2nd from 9:00 to 12:00 in the auxiliary gym at the Wellness Center. She is really interested in getting students involved again. So she's been reaching out to different classes, clubs, sports, et cetera, to see if anybody's interested in selling anything that they are making. Last year, the Abilities Project, FBLA, and the Booster Club were all involved along with some other local various vendors. And then a quick staffing update. As you're probably aware already, we had a recent resignation of our middle school special ed teacher. So we have another vacancy in our special education department. A letter went out to families that were directly impacted by this regarding our plan for coverage, which includes myself as well as substitutes when we can find them to meet the IEP requirements of these seventh and eighth-grade students. But with that being said, we are actively and eagerly looking to fill this vacancy with a qualified and dedicated professional, hoping with it being close to December that there will be some students graduating that semester. If not, hoping to see if there are any new student teaching opportunities that we could partner with. That is the rule of special?
Always something.
Always something. It's better here.
Thank you. Other items for discussion? All right, we will move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2023. So move.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chrissy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us. Move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Chris Sly. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Algoma School District's library plan.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, second. Second by Lucy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the school resource officer contract with the Kiwanis County Sheriff's Department for 24 hours per week during 2024 with the addendum of body-worn cameras being used in schools.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chris Sly, seconded by Chris Benish. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Neola Policy 7440.01.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Lonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the overnight high school ski trip on February 3rd to 5th, 2024 to Big Powderhorn in Bessemer, Michigan, and White Cat Mountains in Upson, Wisconsin. So move. Second. I think we had a Pat.
Very anxious approval there.
So we'll say Pat and Chrissy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Varski Girls basketball game against Luxembourg Casco on Wednesday, December 27th, 2023.
So, second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Chris Benish. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation in amount of $10,175 from the memorial of Larry Schmitz. Motion made by Chrissy, do I hear a second? Seconded by Lonnie. I will say.
Thank you.
My goodness, $10,175. And I think it was pretty much equally split between the math program and the track program, which were his two passions. And certainly, that's exciting. That's a lot of dollars that can go towards some really neat things. So yes, a big, big thank you. What a, what a gift that he, you know, left to the school. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Request for future agenda items.
Was this just in our packet for information or do we need to approve this?
Oh, yeah, you're right. We have the budget hearing, but it wasn't on the, it wasn't on there.
So we'll approve it next, next month, okay. The budget hearing? We need to put only a judge approve it for next month?
Yeah, it should have been a part of the regular minutes. Yeah, we'll have to approve it for next.
It was a separate meeting, so it should be a separate approval. I have a request for a future agenda item, and it doesn't necessarily have to be for December, but maybe for January. And that would be, can we ask our new tech ed person to sort of give us an update on what's happening? I mean, it used to be such a robust program and then we lost the instructor and it buried the student interest. And I'd just like to know what his plans are, you know, how he's, you know, what, what he's offering and what his plans are and whatever. So if you could ask him, I mean, December.
That's a very good idea.
December is a little too soon.
It's an early meeting coming up again, but if you could meet in January. All right.
How long's word is he left? Is he left?
He's in to here.
So maybe the five o'clock meeting, you think getting things ready would work out better for him than, than six, you know, the problem might, but.
Right, we'll set the clock.
Yeah, that's true.
Yep.
If, but the idea of the five o'clock meeting was to make it a shorter one.
Yes, I know.
We'd sort of be, you know, we don't want to rush it because it's like, yes, yes, but, you know. Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute 19.85, subsections 1C, E, and P for the purpose of personal matters, higher staff resignations, and administrative evaluation.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris Benish. I'll call out Chris Benish.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris Sly?
Yes.
Chrisy?